Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the July 12, 2022, meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. We have a pretty full agenda with some specific times on here for things, so I want to move along as quickly as possible. As always, I'm going to call the meeting to order by reading our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. Let's hopscotch and just do announcements quick before we get into public forum. Did you have anything?
I'm good.
You're good. I hope everyone had a nice, happy Fourth of July. We have a concert coming up Friday night, 6:00. I think it's, is it TJ and the Peepers this week? So that's going to be absolutely great. And we had a small structure fire in town today, and the fire department made quick work of it. Chief Flaherty's here, so I just want to thank them, him for that and his department. Everybody's safe, so that's really good. Anything, Brian?
I think that, no. Part of the, some of the DPW employees had a nice article written or something in the paper, but I think, I think Phil will address that during his.
Yes, I did see that. That was, was very nice. Okay, so now we'll backtrack. Is anyone here for public forum?
Can I just say quickly?
Sure.
I know we gotta, and I'll be real fast. I know we gotta think about cemetery, but it made me think about this. I just want you or future Select Boards to know, being cemetery caretaker, I love doing it. I'm proud to do it. I love meeting with families and people. I've worked with Gerard a lot, helping people buy plots, identify plots, and mark hedge stones in various. But someday when I'm gone, I mean, I'm 66, I've been doing this for 22 years, and I'm still doing it. But some, and I took it over in 40, but someday when I'm gone, these townspeople are not going to have somebody, unless somebody steps up and wants to learn how to do it. It's a tremendous amount of respect for people.
Look, some people, their child just died, their spouse passed, something tragic, or they're just planning. It's not like you can just ask somebody from the DPW, and I'm not knocking them at all. They, they do their job incredibly well, but you need somebody that has a little bit of sensitivity, or a lot of sensitivity for people and their situation. I spend currently two hours a week doing this, and it's, it's a lot, and it's been getting far more busier, as Gerard sees. So at some point in the future, I don't want any money for doing it. I never will. But someday, as a town, you might have to consider somebody to do this in a very small part-time, because you got to know the maps, the locations, the, there's a lot to know about it, and just to expect somebody in the secretary's office, it's not going to, it's not going to work. You meet them in the locations. One more thing is, the stones are put in by families. They get old. Some of them fall over and topple over. You just need to be aware, and you can check with town attorney, but if somebody ever knocked over a stone and got very, very injured, they're not our stones. You buy that plot, you own that plot, you own that stone. I try to repair them, I epoxy them, I glue them, I tilt them up. I do a lot of that stuff on my own. But someday, a stone might fall over, and somebody's going to try to come to this town and try to say, you're liable, you didn't fix the stone. We don't fix stones. They're there, and they get old, and I try to take care of them. So I just want to go on record of saying these things for, maybe not you guys, but future Select Boards to be aware of. That's all. I don't need an answer. Thank you.
Well, Joe, thanks for what you do. It is appreciated very much. Yeah, is anyone else here for public forum? Sure, could you step up to the microphone and just say your name, please? You can, you can bring another chair up if you want.
Hi, Terry and Jeff Barthlet. We live at 53 West, and your last meeting, you said that we could have today, again, to, to speak of putting the fire training facility, which was proposed, on the Westfield Town Well site.
West.
I'm sorry. West. Yeah, a verbage here. But anyway, I first wanted to show this map to show where that runoff runs to, which is basically the stream, the waterfall. It goes right underneath the highway. It runs down and over, almost into the center of town areas. Anything put in that field, which is approximately, hands are shaking, right up in this area here. Any toxins, anything that might run off from something going awry is going to go directly through the pretty main water facility there. But anyway, that's Running Gutter, Running Gutter Brook, which has our two wells that are attached to it that come down from the reservoir. To put that there, just having done, as you can see, a little bit of research, just some of these, like, if I could read this real quick, just to attempt to get my point. In many firefighting situations, large quantities of water remain after the fire has been extinguished. This firewater contains materials present from the building and also contains dissolved and particulate materials from combustion processes that are generated through clenching. Fire, firewater can be particularly polluting when the building or site being extinguished contains pollutant-type materials. Releasing contaminated firewater into a river, lake, or other body that supplies drinking water may render the untreated supply for drinking a food or anything else, basically it contaminates. The manager, oh, managing firewater frequently requires that the water be contained to an onsite or removed from the specialized, to a specialized treat, treatment place. But anyway, there's that one, and even in your brochure here, it talks about maintaining and watching our water and the Moraheili forever chemical lawsuit in Massachusetts because of the firefighting foams. I won't bring that up because I see we're in here, you even go after some of those
PFAS chemicals.
PFAS chemicals and everything else. But there's so many other chemicals they don't know about, and some of the firefighting things that, that happen and that they do, and benzene and all these chemicals, it just, it just seems like a horrible place to be putting this.
Basically speaking out against the use of that location. It's way too residential. Both water, wetlands, and air pollution is a concern to all of us.
And wildlife, and there's so much going on there. It, it just, they talk about, and a lot of these too, about what, what's in some of these, even the small plumes, and even your own right here, says that Hatfield, the town's primary drinking water supply is surface water, which is all runoff. It just, like I said, there's multitudes of documentation here that just says it's a bad idea.
As you know, we have high water table out there. If I go into my basement, which is still dirt, and dig about less than two feet down, I'm hitting water. So any of this runoff from a situation where you're putting out chemicals, putting out, you know, building materials that obviously contain toxins that'll go into the ground, we're afraid that's going to be polluting our groundwater. So I just think the concept is fine. I support the fire department in that. I do not support the location whatsoever. You don't do something like that, that close to an aquifer, that close to a wetlands, et cetera.
And we are speaking from experience. We're coming from the Barnes Airport area.
Yeah.
Our well was one of the ones that had to be constantly checked for the toxins that they were using over there to clean the plains and the foams that they were using for their firefighting and stuff. But we just want to let you know, we did start a petition requesting an indefinitely table this proposal of selling and using the noted land, but a location, the fire training facility. We're up to 50 house, almost 50 households at this point.
Forty-eight so far.
Yeah, several.
A lot of people are on vacation.
And several weren't registered to vote that couldn't really sign in, so.
So this will be an agenda item at some point. And, you know, I'm glad that you've come in and raised your concerns. I would, let's make sure that when we schedule it, because it is, I think there's a big discussion that needs to happen here.
Right.
We'll make sure you know when that's going to be.
Okay, and how will you make sure that we know that?
Marlene can reach out to you.
Will there be a town forum?
I mean, I think we mentioned it at our last meeting.
Your email address.
Yeah.
Right. If you want to give her what you, whatever you want, or give to Gerard.
She's got our email addresses, because we've reached out to her before.
And she hasn't answered until this last letter, where she only answered half of one of the questions.
While at the town meeting.
So is there a way to check back with you?
Sure. Yeah, I will tell you that Marlene is very responsive and.
Yeah, the information you were looking for, I had to obtain it from another department.
So this, so I, you know, for the sake of public forum this evening, you know, we, we will be having this as an agenda item, and we will most certainly want to.
There's multiple families that are concerned at this point.
Anything like that, that you would want us to see ahead of time? Again, I would feel free to get that to Marlene so that we have a chance to look at it before the meeting.
Okay.
You know, even things like a map and that sort of thing would be helpful to see before.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
So thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else for community forum? Bob?
So just to speak to these folks' points, anybody's more than welcome to stop down and talk to the fire department about what we're putting in there. There's not a lot of information out. It was just the proposal. We're not burning a lot of the things that were mentioned that would give that firewater. There are certain stipulations that are followed by NFPA of what we are allowed to burn that don't give off those toxins. There's tons of rules that we have to follow. It's very regulated for the system. The building itself is going to look like a home. It's not going to look like a concrete structure. I would implore folks to reach out to us and make sure that they have all of the information of what this building would potentially look like, what we plan on doing in it, how often we're actually going to be burning, which isn't going to be often. It's really for search and rescue, ladders, and those types of things. And then also to make sure that they, you know, check with us. We've done also, we have a member that's on the conservation, so we've looked at some of those things. So I would just, I would implore the residents, they've, they've started a petition. I would ask that they come to us and make sure that they have all of the information from what we are proposing. We kind of are getting shot down before we even get to fully make our proposal of what it's going to be and what we're not going to be doing, so.
So I know we don't go back.
Point taken, and I, yeah, we don't go back and forth. And I would just say the same thing to you, Bob. Just come with anything, any information that would be, and I know you'll get it to us ahead of time because you're super thorough like that, but just make.
I was, I was basically going to say the same thing. It's just important to have the dialogue so that everybody hears what the facts are and what the concerns are and what the reality could be. But this is totally in the planning stages. There is, in proposal stages, there is nothing moving forward yet at this point.
Are we about to ask you questions?
Well, we have, we have people in waiting, and you'll have your turn. We'll, I'll make sure everybody gets a chance.
Possibly a follow-up to the previous people at my aunt Pauline Ossley, who lives at 49 West Street. And that is a, it's an easement that my uncle gave, sold to the town for $1. Being an easement, that was for access to the wells and, and/or was stipulated in it that it could be used for people to walk their dogs out there. Unfortunately, this has turned into a, with the construction on Route 5 and 10.
Which is temporary.
Well, okay, yeah, if that's what you call it. That's what you call it, temporary. Okay, sure. I spoke to Phil about it last year. There is, you know, she's 93 years old. She cannot keep a window open. She has to have her under air conditioner all the time because of the dust situation. No one seems to be concerned about it. I spoke to Phil. He was going to talk to the engineer in charge. Of course, no one has done a thing. You know, it's dusty, the house is filthy. I'm sure no one would like to have that. Now it's become almost a highway, okay? You know, I'm sure you know the situation, the trucks and equipment going in and out of there constantly. Hauling Phil in, hauling Phil out. Okay, I mean, I, you know, as a 93-year-old woman, I don't think she needs to be put through this. And, you know, first of all, I say it was an easement right away to the well. Now it's become, looking to become a street, if you will, okay? You know, you don't do any improvements to the road. They don't try to put anything down on it to prevent the dust and blowing around, and so, you know, that's a concern. I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donnie. Sure, come on up.
Hi, I just have a very brief question, which is why that area of town was selected, and were there other options? And I, and I'm wondering if we can have that information also in, when we have the forum, because I just wonder why. Did it go immediately there, or were there other places?
Yeah, and I don't know the answer to that. It was the Hatfield Fire Association that proposed this plan. They didn't come from.
Right. So no, I'm just wondering if we can sort of have that also presented.
I think there should, all of the information should be available.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Phil, did you want to speak to Donnie's concerns with that road? How much longer do you think they're, they're going to be running in and out of there?
Yeah, how much longer, Bill? Would you tell us, Bill, what areas? It's like guessing lottery. I really don't know. I mean, we've talked to the engineer, surely can reassure that we will talk to him again and see if we can at least have some dust control up there.
It's such a dusty year. I mean, my house has the same thing. We've, we've got some farm fields around, and everything is covered with dust when we have the windows open. It's just a dusty year, so. Okay, well, we do, we do want to make sure she's, you know, happy and comfortable in the house, so we'll have Phil speak to them again.
Okay.
Lydia.
I will be brief. I do know some history about this property. That was all Betsold property at one time or another, Lydia's ish, 449 Main Street. The right-of-way on Pauline Ossley's property was a 14-foot right-of-way granted across Pauline's property, across Otis's property, to the well, for the well, so that the property the town now owns, that was Otis's, is subject to that right-of-way, not in a pertinence, so it doesn't benefit, you're subject to that right-of-way for people to get to the well, as far as I know. So using that 14-foot right-of-way even now for the Route 5 project is an overburdening of the right-of-way. There is an additional older right-of-way, which is only 14 feet, goes along the same path on Pauline Ossley's property, which was for the intention of Eva and John Betsold, which lived to the south, to go to the piece that you bought from Otis, but took a left to go to their farm. So even that, it's still, it was for horses and foot traffic only, so just.
And all of this, all of this needs to come to the other meeting where we have a lot more time to talk about it. So these are all really interesting pieces of information. Thank you.
I was trying to let you know and.
Again, that's something I would love to have.
Lydia shared that information, gave me maps yesterday, and I was going to be talking with the fire chief about it.
Okay. Lydia, thank you.
We'll figure it out.
Anybody else? Okay, so we're going to dive into the agenda, because we have a pretty full agenda, and then we have something specifically at 6:30. So the first item is a discussion with the Cemetery Commission regarding the lease for Billings Way and whether to change use of property from general municipal purposes as originally authorized to cemetery purposes. Are you here to discuss this, or?
Bob's, hold on.
Oh, is Bob?
And Bob will be, he'll be along. So over the years, to keep doing this lease once a year, one year at a time, is very difficult on a farmer.
Right.
And by the time we put the lease out, they're already a month beyond the deadline of order and product. So the idea was, you know, originally, we talked about maybe a three-year lease. I think one of the caveats was maybe to do four or five years, has to go to town meeting and drag it out further. But I think at least if, if we could go up to three years at a time, would give a farmer, whatever farmer bids on it, three years of planning. I mean, that field was strictly sand, barely dirt, and for a farmer to prepare it, it took a lot of work. So here, a farmer might take a year or two years or three years to get that field ready, and then somebody else bids on it and gets it. It's like he did all the work and somebody else bid on it.
Yeah, no, we talked about this before.
Yeah.
And we, I don't think, I don't think, was that the scope of this agenda item? I mean, this is changing.
I don't know who brought it up as an agenda item. Maybe Bob did, or, I, I don't know who brought it up on this, so I.
So last year, when, when this, there was an article on the warrant, the annual town meeting warrant.
Pulled it off.
The Cemetery Commission had recommended that it be taken off, and the Select Board had, had said, we need to have a bigger conversation about this at a later time. So in the meantime, the town leased the property on Billings Way for this current growing season.
Yep.
I know that the, the gentleman that is using that for farming purposes is interested in using it long-term as opposed to a short-term.
Of course.
And we have, we have done, you know, a, a three-year, well, it's a one-year contract with the ability to renew it. According to Town Council, when, when Joe and I were speaking with Attorney Mullin last year, there's, and we were, we were soliciting the, the lease of, of the land under Chapter 30B, which I don't expect anybody familiar with. But according to Town Council, there's another statute that regulates a town issuing it for a long-term period.
And does it?
That's not what the Cemetery Commission, the Cemetery Commission was not comfortable with that. So going forward, as I said, we, we've leased the property this year. The gentleman that, that farms it continues to be interested in farming it long-term. And if he's going to continue to farm it for the next growing season, it would be in his best interest to start planning in December. So that's why I want to start having conversations.
And I understand all of that, and we had that discussion, but this agenda item says changing the, the use of the property, not the length of the lease.
Right, right.
So what, are we talking about two different things?
Well, there would have to be a change. So as Town Council had, had said, is that, because currently, it's under the jurisdiction of the Select Board. When Town Meeting voted to acquire this property, it was under the direction or, or control of the Select Board, and it was to be used for, where is it here? Including for municipal purposes. For municipal purposes, Cemetery Commission would like to lease it. So the article would be to change it from municipal purposes to the control by the Cemetery Commission.
And what is that? Okay, so how does that affect the farm lease?
The Cemetery Commission would.
You would be the lesser.
Correct.
The reason we had gone to Curly Carl, who owned it, was for future cemetery growth.
I negotiated that way back.
Within five years, and the DPW took care of the next layer for us. Thank you, Phil. But we're going to be using that back section very quickly, sadly, but very quickly. But to keep the growth down and to keep just weeds from growing, letting community gardens use it was great, because there's nothing permanent built there, and as cemetery needs it, we just take it. To have a farmer farm it for a few years, there's nothing to really impose upon them until we need it. But what they voted for on, on the article, you know, was any portion of land not immediately needed for cemetery could be leased for a farmer. We've seen other, other groups try to say, we want to build a ball field and a ballpark, and, and then in 20 years to ask a ballpark to get away is going to be a problem.
I understand that. So what are you, what are we really asking?
So in your packet, you have the article that was proposed, recommended by Town Council that was withdrawn from the warrant, or just taken off.
This one was withdrawn? The yellow highlighted one, or this, this other one?
It looks like this.
The Billings Way article?
Let's.
Okay, that's the one that was withdrawn.
That's the article that we're talking about.
Let's get to.
So if we're going to make a change, then we need to have a discussion how to move forward.
Right. I think we're, I don't want to speak for my colleagues. I think we're all in agreement. We would like to see a multi-year use for farming. Right. So, having said that, currently, the land, while we know it's for the cemetery, is under the Board of Selectmen's jurisdiction.
Correct.
We're trying to change that so that the jurisdiction, so it doesn't have to be used for municipal purposes, back to the Cemetery Commission.
Yes.
If, so ultimately, they will enter into a lease, or does it still have to come back to us?
They would enter into the lease agreement.
If all falls into. And what we did with the community gardens is we let it be in charge of Bob Wagner and the, their community group to do that, because we're not.
So they don't lease it? They just get to use it?
They get to use it. And we approve the water. Right. We approve the water usage from the town side. So there's sort of a multi-agreement, where everybody works on it, so that if you guys saw anything wrong with it, you say stop, and that's fine.
I guess my.
But it's not about your board right here now in 2022. It's future boards that, that we're trying to just make sure they're not just going to say, well, the hell with it, when we're just going to take it for something other than cemetery. We're trying to reiterate that it's for our future, it's for everybody in this room that's going to someday die. I'm sorry, people, but, you know, we need that.
Unfortunately.
Hopefully later rather than sooner.
So, but let me ask a question, though. I mean, you know, given that it's town-owned land, I guess I feel like it should be the Select Board that negotiates leases. So why can't we accomplish all of this with still having us negotiate the lease?
Given a recommendation from the Cemetery Commission. And as long as future Cemetery Commissions can say, please, no, no, don't, don't build the building, don't put a permanent structure. And I think, Joe, to, to your point, I think it works in reverse. So, you know, you talk about boards in 20, 25, 50 years. It would be the same for Cemetery Commissions potentially in 20 or 50 years, right? So I think if, if both are involved with the decision-making.
Well, that's why we have minutes.
Right. But I think if both are involved, you know, it just begins that this is the history of how it works type thing down the road. So. Well, I look at it like we're the past and our kids are the future. We just want to make sure that we still have what it was purchased for.
It was purchased, yeah.
And meanwhile, some groups use it, community gardens and whatever, but we just want to make sure that somebody just doesn't snatch it and put a building. In the types, in the types of groups that can use it. That, that's what needs to be spelled out. And to watch our growth, we're so careful to say that people, I get calls from people in Springfield, Holyoke, that want to just come and buy plots here. And we say, no, you've got to show that you lived here once, you were a taxpayer, you went to school, you own property. What's your connection to Hatfield? You've got to have a connection to Hatfield to buy a plot here. You've got family here. Because otherwise, we would sell everything out in a month.
So, I, I mean, I, I'm in favor of the longer farm lease.
So the intent was for discussion purposes.
We talked about that, yeah. I mean, that just makes sense.
Not necessarily making.
Even from our standpoint, to not have to do it every year.
Farming.
But we want to help him, you know, be able to farm in a.
And I can guarantee you, we won't.
But I guess I don't understand why we can't issue a three-year lease, but still have it be the Select Board that issues the lease on the town property.
Because of state regulations.
We can't do a three-year lease.
Based on Town Council's review of this, and Joe had the conversation with Attorney Mullin.
The state, the state has some kind of rules, like we all see, that you can go. From a municipality perspective. I think you can go three years, but if you go five years, you got to have a town vote.
If you go longer.
Isn't, weren't we talking about three-year leases anyway?
Because the gentleman leasing it would like long-term, and the Cemetery Commission was interested in leasing it long, on a longer term.
We'll figure this out. But if you say, you say town meeting for more than five, fine, then don't, don't waste your time. But if three years, it's okay. It'll buy somebody some time at a time, and if it's four or five, it's okay. We're not trying to create a bureaucracy. We're just trying to.
I mean, I think three years might be in everybody's best interest. It works for the farmer, it works for the Cemetery Commission, if you're saying that we're migrating a little down.
You could do three with two, two, one, you know.
Well, it was, yeah, it was a one-year with two-year renewal.
We just want to make it simple.
But, oh, I know, we thought we were.
But the more we ask attorneys, it makes it more complicated.
I'm in favor of a three-year lease, if that's what we can do without getting into all kinds of other changes and having the select board do the.
So could you say three with two one-year options?
Could you say that?
We can't do that long. You can't, under chapter 30.
You can't.
You can't do that.
Oh, anyway, just three years.
We'll figure it out. I think we're all, again, I think we're all in sync.
We want to, we all want to accomplish exactly the same thing.
Four times we have this discussion in a meeting for the future, they'll look back and say, it's documented, it's cemetery property.
Right.
Cool.
It's definitely cemetery property.
No doubt, yeah.
Last year, I thought we decided it was going to be three years. So this is getting way too complicated anyways.
It didn't get done.
You know, we go three years because we couldn't go five because we'd have to go to town meeting.
Marlene, you have enough to do the three years now.
But, you know, we all know that it's for cemetery, but when the town voted back in, I don't even know what year this was. It's under Article 11. Oh, it looks like maybe.
Probably after 2006.
I don't know what year. It said to authorize a selectman to purchase for municipal purposes. That's what Tom Mullen is hanging his hat on.
Back then, that was the way the wording was used.
Right.
With the knowledge that it was bought for the cemetery.
Well, our municipal purpose is the cemetery, but we didn't spell it out.
Oh, and so because cemetery commissioners are elected, they'd have to issue the lease? Is that?
Being elected, I don't think has anything to do with it.
It doesn't matter? So then, maybe we just clean it up at town meeting, then?
Yes.
Change it, put an article on to change it to cemetery purposes?
That's what this article does.
Okay.
Okay.
So then, let's do it.
Ooh, thanks.
That was the intent of the purchase.
Cemetery commission did not agree with this article at the time.
At the time, because of the way the wording came out. But if it can say for future cemetery purposes, preserve for future cemetery, something like that would be fine.
You want a special town meeting in the fall, Mr. Moderator?
I think we're going to have to have one.
It does reference cemetery. It does reference the cemetery.
I know how much you love those.
Okay, so let's get some suggested language on fixing that from the town attorney and then make a decision about.
Know what all our intentions are.
You know, maybe ask, you know, the gentleman who's leasing it if three years would work. And then, you know, we don't have to do the other processes to get longer-term leases.
Just know at a town meeting, I can't have an, I won't have an opinion, so, you know. I can't hear right now.
That doesn't happen very often, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. It sounds like we're having a little storm out there.
Okay.
Okay, so thank you, Joe. Topic two is with the historical commission discussion regarding storage of artifacts and the potential relocation of artifacts. And you did just hand me, oh, here it is.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I apologize for having just gotten that to you.
That's okay. It's easy to scan quickly.
So I'll keep this short and sweet. You know, three and a half years ago, the commission and society agreed to having the artifacts stored upstairs, moved temporarily to Benson's and to the five college annex with the understanding that they would be brought back when the reconstruction was finished. Reconstruction's been finished, and, you know, now we're being told we can't bring them back. And I understand that. That seems pretty firm. So we have been working to come up with solutions because at the moment, the things in Benson are, they're not safe. And I put on the front of what I handed you, page two of the agreement that we just signed, saying that, you know, the town will provide adequate space for display and storage of the collections and also provide necessary climate control and protection from damage from insects or rodents. And I don't think that is being met at the moment for the items in Benson's. So, as I said, we looked at these different solutions, and I made this little cheat sheet of the advantages and disadvantages, including the current solution. What I'm asking now is for you to look at that. I don't know if you guys have other ideas, but I think, you know, we can come after you've had a chance to look and think about it. We can come back and discuss this more. I don't think we have to have a big, long, drawn-out discussion tonight, especially since I just handed it to you.
I do want to follow up on one point. Construction's not finished because we're in the process of renovating the bathroom. So that hasn't been completed yet. Now, there was some discussion of another location, I believe, for storage, right?
It's on this chart.
Right.
It's on this chart.
It's on now the street.
Yeah, so I provided that, you know, with cost and, like I said, some, you know, advantages and disadvantages of each.
Amy, I don't believe the upstairs has climate control. Does it still?
There's no.
Oh, okay.
Because you referenced here on your chart.
Yeah, that's mistaken. My mistake. Then we can turn that, make that a disadvantage then instead of an advantage. But I'm sorry, I threw this together kind of quickly. I will go back and maybe tighten it up a little bit and resend it. But as I said, I just wanted to sort of get this going instead of going back and forth about, you know, we want it here, you don't. Let's just try and find a solution that will work and makes the artifact safe.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much, Amy.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Thanks, Amy. So, but the annex, isn't our rental or our lease running out? Or is that an option going forward?
Yeah, yes, it will in December.
And I think they've extended us once or twice with the, we really mean it this time. You guys need to get your things out of there.
Is it in December?
December.
And we don't want to be moving in.
So that is, that's coming up in December?
This December.
Oh, okay. I did not know that. Okay, yeah, that, again, I will tighten this up a little and.
No, that's okay. I mean, just this is, I thank you for doing this. I mean, it's nice to see it all in one place. People don't know what we're looking at, it's basically some options, where we are and where we potentially could be. And that's what's on the chart that Amy.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, the one, the Pechorix solution is a really, really ideal. If that can, if that can happen, that's a terrific solution. But again, we can go into details after we've had a chance to look.
Okay.
And that's it.
Was that an official quote you were given for Pechorix, or is that a negotiable type thing? I mean, was it just a, this is probably what it might cost? Do we know? Or was it a?
I believe we were given a quote. I think, you know, maybe we can.
An official quote? This is what it's going to be?
Try and negotiate. You know, it was sent to me today, and I could not find it in my email. I wanted to print it out.
Sure, that's fine.
I couldn't find the official quote.
Okay.
But as I said, you know, I will go back, you know, maybe put this together a little more formally and get you a quote. We can go back and talk to Tim and.
Sure. And if you don't mind, and if it's not a hassle, maybe what size space it is that's included in the quote for the cost.
Yeah, that would be all the information.
I mean, you know, just so we can sort of have an idea of what it is.
Oh, I forgot that in there. It's 1,200 square feet, I believe.
Oh, it is? Oh, you did? I'm sorry. It's in the other column. Sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Amy, thank you.
Okay, sure thing. Thank you.
Great, thanks a lot.
Okay, moving right along here. Topic three is plans to proceed with discussions regarding fire, ambulance department operations and EMS coverage, proposed ideas to review operations during the year. So Chief Flaherty will be joining us. So this is taking a look at, we figured we'd spend this year taking a look at coverage in town, how we're doing with coverage, particularly this is on the ambulance side, and what, if anything, there might be for other options. So you have given us a letter here with a suggestion of who you might want to be on this committee?
That was my understanding, is that there might have been a working group or a working together.
Yeah, like a working group. Just a, yeah, it was going to be just a working group. I don't know which of you, I know, I thought you had expressed interest in wanting to do it, but.
It doesn't matter to me. I think Ed's the liaison, which is.
I mean, I have no problem with it. I just don't know if the committee at this time is premature because we wanted to run everything a year and get all the numbers in. So I like the idea of having a committee. It just, I think it's just early right now.
I think we talked about starting it maybe after the first of the year. We had some stats from, because Bob's been very aggressive about coming up with a new staffing plan. And so if this started, because, you know, we need to know by town meeting how it's going to work. So maybe if you waited until like right after the first of the year, you have like half a year of stats to now project what you're going to want to do and be ready for town meeting.
Well, I like the idea of starting at the first of the year. Also, I'd like to have some kind of description and guideline of the committee's responsibilities figured out of what is expected from the committee, what the committee should be doing, and what, so we don't overspit our boundaries on what the committee's responsibilities are, that's all. So I think that's something that has to be figured out, too.
Like the guidelines and goals, like what?
All right. So, picking up on what Ed just said, I would suggest that the committee be put together relatively soon and perhaps have a first meeting or a kickoff meeting, whatever we want to call it, in the fall. Because those guidelines can be ironed out.
Well, October might work, then.
Yeah, something like that. And Bob would have some preliminary numbers as from July 1st through, or even the end of, you know, June, when we sort of ramped up, through whatever, you know, four months' worth of data maybe, or three months. I just think rather than kick it off in January, maybe just kind of get the ball rolling a little bit, and then in earnest, those meetings can sort of look at the history. And then, by then, you have a six-month.
Yeah.
Amount of numbers and information, you know?
Going into an October start would give us, you know, we have three months of the weekend coverage that we started mid-March. And then we would have the full seven-day-a-week coverage that obviously started on July 1st. So we would have some numbers to be able to start looking at and showing. I mean, I know in the first half of the year, we were less than a third of what we were last year for mutual aid. You know, it was 63 or 64 in the first six months. This year, we had 21 total times that another ambulance came into town. And some of those were actually intercepts because we just didn't have a paramedic. It didn't mean that we didn't cover it. So the actual calls that we've given up, I believe, was only 11 in the first six months.
Right.
And last year was in the 60s.
Much different.
Right. So it's already showing dividends to the residents that need those services, obviously. And I'm not part of that committee, but that was just my suggestion to get everybody on board, what they're looking for. And then maybe even after, you guys have a meeting, whoever's on it, come before the select board, and then we'll make, you know, and then we can go back and forth and decide, is this how we want to move forward?
Right.
Because come January, we're really starting to look at.
The budget.
At least, right, on a preliminary basis, the budget, so.
Right. Departments have already submitted their budget.
That's right. So if by then, we have some information, some useful information, I think that would help.
That's a good timeframe. I think the suggestions of who you suggest being on are good. I didn't come up with anybody as a committee member or a town resident, and nobody really flashed to mind instantly, but there's a little bit of time, I guess.
Right. And just so people, because I don't think we spelled it out, we're suggesting that perhaps there's a five-person committee, which of course would include the chief and would include a select board member and a finance committee member.
And what this group will be tasked with doing is looking at how we're doing with, you know, response, response time, and then balance that with proposals from a couple of other communities that may, you know, that could also provide contracted service for us, and what is the best option for us from, looking at it from all angles?
From a service perspective and from a financial perspective.
Right, exactly. And balancing all of that. So if there's anyone who watches this, who would be interested in being a town resident on the committee, they should certainly reach out to Marlene and let her know.
Lydia has a question.
Go ahead.
Lydia has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lydia.
I just want to remind you, if you're going to have a finance committee member on that board, finance committee members cannot be on any other board except the finance committee unless the charter specifically says that there needs to be a finance committee member, so.
What charter?
The bylaw.
We're going to put together.
The by, yeah. The finance committee bylaw states that.
Oh, but we're not going to have a charter. This is just going to be a working group thing.
Bad hoc, I mean.
So maybe there's no finance committee member on it?
Yeah, I mean.
Well, we'll get to the bottom of that.
It has to be in the charter of the committee.
It's not even going to be. It's like an ad hoc thing. There's not going to be like a formal charter.
Yeah.
So, all right, well.
Because finance committee is involved in budgeting, you know, developing the budget, that would be the purpose of having somebody from the finance committee. I think I believe that's the idea.
Well, that would, yeah, that's what would make sense because we're, you know, but if it can't be based on that, then we'll have to come up with another person to be on it.
Plan B.
Because ultimately, this will all be presented to the finance committee as a whole.
Right.
So.
Thank you.
Okay, very good.
Did you have something else you want to say about?
Is that anything else?
For that one, no. I believe I have another agenda.
You do have an agenda item, but I just wanted to make sure you were done with that one.
Nope, that was it for that one.
You're sitting there.
And when you say another member of your department, that would be on the EMS side?
Or a dual role, because we're, you know, it's written as looking at the total operations of the department.
Right.
So I think, as this committee is put together So, I think, as this committee is, is put together and we are looking at the total picture, because yes, EMS is the bulk of what we do, but there is fire. I mean, case in point today.
Today, yep.
We responded to a structure fire and there's only three people, including myself, the pump operator, and one other firefighter, until mutual aid showed up. So, it's, it is both sides, fire and EMS, that need to be looked at as a whole, of what we're providing for services for the residents.
Right.
So, it could be either. It could be somebody that's a, a dual role, fire and EMT, and it's just, in a way, I guess, it's somebody else to be kind of on my side, as there's potentially two people from the, the town management side on this group.
Well, I don't think there's sides. I think we're, we're all on the same side. It's just, it, it has to be looked at, right? It was something we really struggled with, and you did come up with a solution, but we need to make sure that we're, we've got the best solution, so. Okay. You're all set on that item?
Yes.
Okay. So, your next is regarding ARPA funds?
Yes. I had sent you folks an email yesterday, and this was, it was just a thought that I came up with as, because from the time that the proposal originally went in with the budget that was proposed, and when the meeting was actually, or when it was approved at the end of January, the budget was built for, starting at the weekend of February 5th, or the 4th, I think was the Friday. But by the time I could advertise, get people hired, whatnot, it takes a few weeks. We put all of our new employees and they have to go get a physical, and sometimes that takes a couple of weeks. So, in turn, because of that, you know, there was open weekends, leading to extra money, or money that was not expended. There are times that we didn't cover every single shift or every single position. There was one person here, not the two. Again, can't force people to come to work if they don't want to, so it led to remaining balance out of the original $35,000 allocation of ARPA. And it was just to see whether or not the select board would be interested in continuing to carry it beyond the June 30th, which was the original vote back in January. And all this essentially would be doing is, we would continue to use the ARPA and then not use the free cash right off the bat that was appropriated. So, it's, it's kind of a wash in the grand scheme of things. It just means that out of the 181,000 of free cash that was approved at town meeting, we wouldn't expend all of that due to the additional 9,000 that's there.
I think it makes sense to just leave it there, to be perfectly honest with you. And I don't think by, we may have said by June 30th, but I don't believe that that is binding. It's ARPA funds, so we can, as long as we spend it over, and Lori, I'm looking at Lori and Sharon, as long as we spend it within the timeframe of ARPA, which is three years, I believe, it's not, it's not a problem, you know. So, unlike our regular budgets and free cash and things like that, so.
I think the only thing that this would come to is because of the original vote in January, I think one of you would have to make a motion to extend it until the money is completely expended, or however somebody wanted to make that. Just because, as I recall, the original motion was weekend coverage through the end of the fiscal year, or specifically through June 30th.
Yeah, and I, and I think that was just because, but I'll make a motion that the funding not expended by June 30th be carried over into this fiscal year from, for the ARPA funds, for the fire department.
I'll second that.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion?
No.
No.
So, there was, your budget was, oh, sorry, interrupt your motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, the current budget, FY '23 budget, though, funds the added coverage from free cash.
Correct. So, essentially, we, we could spend down this 9,000 first.
Right.
And then ultimately, at the end of FY '23, we won't have expended the full 181,000 that was.
That would go to free cash.
Right.
To next year's free cash.
Right. So, even if, if you had, if you had not, you know, and you returned the ARPA money to the, you know, it's still sort of a wash.
Yeah. But, you know, the money was allocated in the spirit of funding this, so that's, you know, so leaving it like that is, to me, the intent of what it was for.
Excellent.
That's it?
That was all I was on here for tonight.
Well, thanks for.
And Joe stole your number one, your topic number one.
Yeah, that's right.
And thanks for, thanks for today.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay, moving right along here. Black Birch is here. Black Birch Vineyard is here with a request to change their hours regarding their liquor and entertainment licenses. They would like to expand their hours of operation to be consistent with the site plan approval dated February 14th, 2022. Welcome.
Is that you under there, Michelle?
What's that?
Is that you under there, Michelle?
Yes, it is.
Nice to see you, sort of.
See you, too.
Thank you.
And so, we have this, so this would be, this would allow you, and this is, this is in accordance with the, as I just read, with your site plan approval, this would allow you to have music indoor from 10 a.m. to 10 p.m., seven days a week, and for outdoor, 10 a.m. to 10 p.m., seven days a week. Well, I can tell you, as one of your closest supporters, I have no problem with this.
It's not, it doesn't happen every day.
It doesn't happen, and it's actually lovely when it does. So, we sit outside sometimes and enjoy your concerts from home. So, I, I mean, I'm assuming all of this is in order, Marlene.
It is.
Yeah, I, I personally, and as representative of the town, don't have a problem with it. You guys have been a great addition to the community.
You have been a really great addition.
Thank you.
It's also, I know, I noticed that the planning board also signed off on this from a decision on the site plan approval back a few months ago.
Yep.
So.
I, I'm good. I have no, I, as I said, I just, you know, thank you for doing what you're doing in town, really.
Absolutely.
So, I will make a motion to approve the license expansion, hours of operation to be consistent with the site plan approval dated February 14th, 2022.
I'll second that.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll let you know when we're going to have friends over. If you could plan some music, that would be really nice.
There's something going on Sunday that was rescheduled for May, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
You, too.
Okay, and now we have some appointments.
There's Lydia.
Lydia is back.
Got tons of them.
Yeah, lots of appointments. So, these are, so is the only paperwork I have on the assistant treasurer?
You should have.
No, there's lots of number sixes in there somewhere.
I don't have a six. There's a few, yeah. Resignations from Joe Petson, Carrie Wojniak. Okay, so we, we need to, we need to accept these resignations?
Well, actually, the appointments are first, right? Yes, the appointments are first, not the resignations follow.
Well, technically, they resign, and then you appoint, but.
Yeah, I mean, why, why wouldn't we accept the resignation, which creates the opening and then you?
Right.
Well, the resignations are different departments.
From what we're, from the appointments we're making.
But, but there's also resignations for the board of registrars. There should be attached to the appointment sheet.
Oh, they would have acknowledged.
Yeah, we'd have to look at this document versus our.
They acknowledged those previously.
Oh, Joe Petson and Teresa Wojniak.
They acknowledged those at their last meeting.
We did?
We did.
Okay. Okay. So, you're just looking for us to appoint?
New board of registered members.
Mary Need and Karen Karowski.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Election officers?
Election workers. I don't have.
Did we accept them? Marlene, do you know? Or was there already vacancies?
Carrie Wojniak.
Always vacancies with.
Yeah, because it's just a long list, right?
It's a long list, and, and some people can make it on election, some people can't.
Alright, so I, I will make a motion to appoint Frederick Bloom and Betsy Tarr as election worker.
Second.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. And then we have the appointment of the assistant treasurer collector, which would be Tammy Wendelowski.
I'll make a motion to appoint Tammy Wendelowski to fill the assistant treasurer and assistant collector position.
Second.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then, we want to acknowledge the resignations of Joseph Lavalley from the Disability Commission, Brandon Iyavekia from the Police Department, and Cindy Doty from the Council on Aging.
So moved.
Right. Did we, I didn't have those in here, but.
Yeah, I thought they were in there. And having a conversation with Lydia, I had, it was always my understanding that the board had to vote to accept those resignations. They're required to submit their official resignation to the town clerk, and the select board can acknowledge the resignations.
It's, it's kind of just, it's a nice gesture to say thank you for your service.
Right, right, absolutely. And we do, we do send them a letter.
Okay. So, we don't need to?
You don't need to vote?
Okay.
So, I withdraw my motion then.
Okay, so we acknowledge, we acknowledge those resignations, and absolutely, of course, as always, are grateful for the time people give the town and are grateful for the time that those three individuals gave to Disability Commission, Police Department, and Council on Aging, so. Okay, so Lydia, you're all set?
Nice. Thank you, Lydia.
Phil, we have a water abatement. I did read the background story here, so they were given estimated bills and then were billed
Yes.
Sort of a second time for what they'd already paid in estimated bills. So, it's pretty straightforward.
So, it's recommended by, that abatement be granted.
Okay. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the abatement at 78 Chestnut Street in the amount of $450 overpayment.
Second.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Marlene, VEDAR?
Yes, so this is an annual.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you, Phil.
Renewal, basically.
I am so sorry.
That's okay.
I'm sorry. Phil, could you comment on what I had alluded to earlier during the beginning of our meeting?
Sure. So, Brian wrote up in announcements that there was some praise for the cemetery workers, so if I could just take a minute.
Yes, please, I'm sorry.
Praise for cemetery, this was in the Daily Gazette. "I'm a Hatfield resident and frequent visitor to the West Hatfield and Main Street Cemeteries. I am always very impressed how meticulous they are, cared for. One day, when I was visiting the Main Street Cemetery, a woman from New York stopped and asked me if I knew who maintained it. She asked if I was a resident of Hatfield and if I could pass along a message for her. She has visited many cemeteries over the years, and this has been one of the best maintained she has ever been to. So, many thanks to Robert Sernack and Matt Shippey. Your great work has not gone unnoticed and is appreciated by many. Betty Koch, Hatfield."
Very nice, you know, so certainly, sorry, go ahead. That was your, that was yours.
No, no, no. No, go ahead.
But, you know, certainly, big thanks to, to, is it Bob Sernack, Robert Sernack?
Yes.
Yeah, Robert Sernack and Matt Shippey. And, and also, thank you to Betty for acknowledging that. That was very kind.
Thank you.
We love hearing those kinds of things.
Right, yeah. Thanks, Phil.
Okay, the VEDAR contract.
Right. I know you're familiar with VEDAR. It's a software program that the treasurer and accountant use, and.
VEDAR.
So, this is the annual agreement for July 1, 2022, through June 30th, 2025. Actually, yeah, I was thinking it was one year. So, if the board would be willing to vote to approve the contract and sign it, please.
I'm fine with it.
I'll make a motion to approve the VEDAR contract as presented.
Second.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item I have is just for discussion purposes, and unless you'd like to make a decision, for an additional 700, what was it?
$23.
$23 for the police and fire accident insurance coverage. We could meet the McNamara, McNamara law. It's not a requirement, but it is accidental death and dismemberment limits, so we'd be increasing it to 800, at 800, 689,000.
This is for police and fire?
Police and fire accident coverage, right. This would be for a career person, that increase.
Not a call?
Full-time, full-time, not, not part-time employees. So, we currently pay the, we just renewed it, and we can increase this anytime, but we just renewed the current policy for 20,850, I'm sorry, 20,127. And as I said, the additional will be 723.
I mean, that seems like a.
So, the current accidental death and dismembering coverage for career is 50,000. So, non-career actually is 689,000. So, what we would be doing is increasing the 50,000 to 689,000.
For 723.
Correct. So, it's sort of a no-brainer.
It is a no-brainer.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to, are you okay if we go ahead and vote on it?
Yes, I am. I'm comfortable with it.
I'll make a motion to approve the increase in the police and fire EMS accident insurance coverage.
Second.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We didn't do minutes.
Thank you for doing that.
I know, I've, I've got them aside. We'll do them later.
And one other last piece of business that came up today, which was unanticipated, is the memorandum of understanding with Franklin County Solid Waste Management for hauling and disposal of sludge.
This is just something we do every year. There's no substantial changes to this agreement?
I believe there's the increase. I don't know if Phil's still here. He is still here.
Yes, it's, it's an annual.
Right.
And they, but the, there's, is there an increase?
The cost per gallon?
I'm sure that's gone up.
Yeah, I, I believe it is.
But it's within your budget? Okay.
Alright, I, go ahead.
Nope, I was just going to ask.
I was just going to make. I'll make a motion to approve the MOU between the Franklin County Solid Waste Management District and the Town of Hatfield regarding hauling and disposal of sludge.
Second.
A motion made and second. Any further discussion?
No, ma'am.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Marlene, there's a couple of things in the signature pile. The.
Yes.
The, this is a liquor license?
There's some lines that don't require a vote.
Okay, this one doesn't and this one.
So, that liquor license application, you had the hearing, you did.
Okay.
Yes. And then, just if you remember, the minutes need to be approved.
Yes, I'm going to get to the minutes.
Are Darryl and Sean coming? Are Darryl and Sean coming?
As far as I know.
That's fine. We have a couple minutes to do the.
If we should, if they want to hold anybody up.
So, we, we have some minutes here that we need to backtrack and get approved.
Make a motion to approve the minutes, May 31, 2022, May 31, which would be the conference room town hall. This other one is, make a motion to approve May 31, 2022, which would be at 405 Conference Room Town Hall, and make a motion to approve June 14th, 2022, at 5:30 p.m. And make a motion to approve June 28th, 2022, at 4:30 p.m.
Second.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, we got through all of that, which is great, and you wanted to take a little break between?
Yes.
We're waiting for some select, excuse me, some finance committee members, and we need to make a little adjustment, right, to mics and stuff, so we'll take a little break. And we'll, we'll be back very soon. Okay, we are back. Again, this is the July 12th, 2022, select board meeting. We're joined by the finance committee. We have to go through some end-of-year budget transfers quickly to formally vote to cover these. So, do you want me to run through them?
Someone should.
Okay. There is $1,800 in tree warden expenses. There is.
Is, sorry, is this the $1,800 left over, or that we need to find?
Do you want me to explain?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, if you look on the left, that's where the accounts are coming from, so we're taking the funds from those funds and moving it to the, to the accounts on the right. So, basically, I'm taking the first number, you know, I'm taking them from the reserve.
So, I'll, I'll read it that way.
So, that's all coming from, the first six are coming from finance reserve?
Yes. 51,983 is the total.
Okay. So, from finance reserve, $1,800, and that would be for tree warden expenses. From the finance reserve, $484.25, and that is snow and ice overtime. Also, from the finance committee reserve fund, $4,108.24, snow and ice expenses. From the finance committee reserve fund, $37,105.50, and that's facilities expenses. Could, Phil, could you elaborate at all on that?
A lot of that is utility costs. We, like I said before, that fire pump downstairs, the, the electricity is through the roof when it exercises. It's just.
And that's 37,000 dollars?
Didn't I, didn't I hear that there's some elevator expense in there, and then there's a door that, that was quite costly?
Yes, the door.
The handicap door.
Here?
Here.
I, I just think, just in general, just so townspeople know where, how we kind of got to that number. Okay.
That's kind of a lot.
It is a lot. Finance committee reserve fund, from the finance committee reserve fund, $175 for council on aging expenses. Again, finance committee reserve fund, $8,310, and that is for property and liability insurance. That's just a difference in the bid. It's difficult to, we don't have that information in when we budget, correct, Marlene?
We don't, and we've added vehicles, so.
Okay. Health insurance, from, from the health insurance line, $11,507.15, and that is for employer Medicare payments. And then, from sewer equipment and repairs, $10,000, and that is for water professional services. So, the grand total of all of this is $73,490.14. Just transferring from one account to another.
What, what are the water professional services?
So, water, the water budget's over, and that line is over by the most, so I picked that one to move it there. But, I mean, all of them are over, but Phil could probably explain. That's just kind of a, yeah. You can explain the detail of why they're up?
Yeah, I mean, you know, again, you know, you, you know, all costs went up between testing, between utilities, everything went up with, you know, this last six months with this. Like Laurie said, she took, took the one that went over the most and took it out of there.
Yeah.
And, and I have one other, and I'm sorry. Snow and ice, I thought we took care of that at town meeting.
Those are the last stragglers that came through after we had you guys reserve the total deficit.
We thought we had covered, but there were additional invoices that came in after.
There was a few more invoices that came through after that.
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm fine with this. Does anyone, do you have any questions, Ed?
No. No, it's not uncommon that, I mean, we do this.
Every year.
Particularly yearly, and the good news is, we have the funding to actually be able to transfer to those accounts.
And some of these are lines that are just naturally unpredictable.
Right.
Yep.
So, I don't have any questions. I just had that comment I wanted to make.
Okay. So, we'll need to make a motion, and then you'll do a motion as well?
Yep.
Well, I'll take a motion to approve these.
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 end-of-year budget transfers as presented.
Second.
A motion made and second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would entertain a motion to accept the, to accept the end-of-year budget transfers. Do I hear a second? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, ma'am?
Excellent. So, we just, now, we need, you're going to continue with the meeting. We're going to adjourn.
Yeah, before we adjourn, I, and I just wanted to bring it up, because we talked about it prior to town meeting and going forward, but we told committees, we told people that going forward, we would be looking at next year's budget and trying to figure out where we're going to find money, and whether we're going to need some sort of override to make this happen, or what's going to happen. But, I don't want us to forget about that, because I think what tends to happen is, we go on our merry way, and then January comes along, and that's too late. So, I'm just encouraging that this is something that, if we're going to address it, needs, we need to start fairly soon when it's easier. It'll never be easy, but.
Well, maybe the whole budget process should be started a little bit early this year with the, you know, everything going to department heads and trying to get a little bit of a sense of, maybe that's part of, part of how we figure all of that out sooner.
Right. I, I don't know. I just propose it because when we get to January, it's like it's too late, right?
Yes.
Because it's hard to put it together, because doing the budget is one thing, but if you're actually going to think about, okay, we're not going to have enough money, we're going to offer to townspeople, you know, if you want X, Y, and Z services, this is potentially what it could cost you in additional tax revenue to get those, you know, what it could cost you in additional tax revenue to get those, you know, whether it's school, fire, police, doesn't matter, town hall, so, so, and then it takes time, Lydia needs time, you know, because that's a, that's a, an election thing or, you know, that's a, so.
Ballot questions, yeah.
Ballot question, so that's why I bring it up.
And ideally, if you're gonna do a ballot question, you want on the town election day.
Right, right.
Not as a special election, so.
One point we talked about, you know, we have, we have a potential for an election in November, too.
This November, yeah.
This November, we have an election, and maybe that's too soon, but, you know, the potentially, the.
Pros and cons to both.
There's pros and cons, right, if you wait until.
Wait, it's after town meeting.
Right. I understand, yeah, and if you do it, then, then you know what you have to work with for the budget season.
Right.
But you also have to know what to ask for in November.
Yeah, you have to know what you're funding, so any department that is going to need to be funded, which is all of them, of course, some more than others percentage-wise in particular, are gonna need to know their plan and bring it forward so we can have a discussion of exactly what the town taxpayer will get for their money.
Right.
Because I wasn't thrilled with the way we went through last year's budget, and that's nobody's fault, but there was some big, there were some heavy hitter ticket items for departments, and really, there was no explanation, that was satisfying to me. Having said that, if there's gonna be a change, if there's gonna be something that we're gonna vote on for improvements or to maintain certain things, we need to, we need it spelled out. And I don't just mean us, I mean, more importantly, the voters, they need to know exactly what they're gonna be paying for, if in fact, an override is an option.
Right, well, and some, some of those things we already know, because, because they're from last year.
But we paid everything last year.
Funded them last year.
Right?
Yeah, but we used free cash to do it.
I, I understand, Sean.
So those things are already, you're already gonna have to make up for that somehow, that's, that's already gonna have to happen, you've already done that, so that's why I'm saying, like, some of those items, we already understand, we, we just have to decide whether we want to continue to do them or not.
Yeah, I mean, tonight, we talked.
Or whether we're gonna look at other options.
Right. Tonight, we are, we already talked to the fire chief about putting a subcommittee together, about the whole future, if you will, or planning of, that's one department, and, you know, and you're right, we use free cash for that, but, you know, and there's.
And there's other things that came forward that we didn't do.
Right.
So, I mean, presumably, those needs haven't gone away. I, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, I'm not 100% certain, and I don't have strong feelings, but I'm not 100% certain that I want to just open it up, you know, in August to say, every town department that needs more money, come on, tell us what it is, you know? Like, I think we have some long-established sort of list of things that have been coming year after year, some of which were funded with free cash, some of which haven't been funded, some of which we can predict, you know, I mean, there's the planning issues that have been on the table, you know, like, we kind of have this list of things that have come back several times now.
If we're going to make an ask, I want to make sure, like you say, that it's, it's right on the money, but it's also positions us, puts us in a healthy position moving forward. In other words, don't rush it and then say, oh, we should have asked for this and now we want to do another ask. So Lydia, you said you.
I, I just wanted to say, you talked about the November election, for you guys, it sounds so far away, but because of early voting and everything, the ballots are already coming out more than a month before the election, which means the November ballots will be out in.
I don't think we'd be there to do it in November.
Yeah, I just, I mean, already the petitions have circulated and we've already turned them in for, you know, November questions, so.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay, well, you're right.
So we might have some targeted questions we want to ask as well about those items, you know, that have been sort of ongoing items for a while now.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe starting in early fall, we have sort of maybe some working group discussions, strategic things about the best way to move forward with that, both from a financial perspective and the timing.
Well, I think in the fall, too, that'll give us an idea, at least from a school perspective, that'll give us an idea of the enrollment and the school choice that did come, that didn't come, that increased, decreased, stayed the same, stayed flat, whatever, I mean, because those are, you know, enrollment's one of those things that we, we all have to take into account, because that changes, right? We based our, but, we, they, and we based our budget off of this many students, and so hopefully, there's more than we based them on, and there's not less, or at least it stayed the same, but there, there's no way of knowing until school starts.
The school committee, obviously, the school department will be the most significant.
Yeah, you never, I mean, that's one, one of the problems is everybody can change their mind.
Well, that, that's exactly what's happened through the years, you know, certain families will, will apply for school choice, one, two, three, four different districts, and until they walk through the door, you don't, even if they say we're coming, until they walk through the door, you, you don't know.
Right.
And, and they've got to stay for a week or two, because they might be feeling it out and then go back to their home district, I mean, we, we used to run into that, so hopefully, there's not too much of that, but.
Well, maybe some input from department heads sooner rather than later about some of their, what they anticipate, you know, and not only just in the next fiscal year, but, you know, maybe.
The near future.
Maybe looking out at three, five years, just to make sure that they're, you know, because we can't.
No, if we're gonna do it, it's gotta be kind of a one and done, I mean, so.
So maybe asking department heads to start thinking about that and, in a very responsible way.
Right.
Right? That's probably a really good starting point, because it at least gives us some discussion points.
Well, we could have conversations, I mean, we could do it numerous different ways, I guess, we could have conversations with, you know, independently elected folks, you know, like, I mean, I know, we'll probably want to meet with the school committee and probably want to meet with the planning board, at least, about what they, you know, because they have stuff on, both of them will have stuff on the table.
But not just on the elected side, I mean, it should be on the, you know.
No, I know, but they're not department heads, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
We always seem to know the questions, we just gotta find the answers, that's all. It's always been the hardest part.
I, yeah, and, and I, I would think September, we should, early September, we should at least try to kick it off at some, some point.
It's, that's sort of what I meant by starting the budget process early, I mean, that's gonna be, you know, an early part of the budget process is meeting with all the departments anyway, so.
And I, I didn't hear, so, so, and you're, Bob is, there's a, tell me what the committee for the.
So there's, we're, we're talking about sort of a working group to, to look at the fire ambulance, you know, as we talked about, there's, well, there's been this big increase to, to do the coverage. We also have information from other, one other community, I, I don't think we've gotten information from another community about their proposal to cover, which is actually not a bad proposal, but we need to balance, right, what the services we're providing with how much it's costing, so Bob gave a letter tonight of suggesting that this committee be someone from the Select Board himself, someone from Finance Committee, but Lydia pointed out, we can't have someone from Finance Committee on this because you can't serve on another board. Is it even if it's a working group, they're not gonna be, like, appointed to something?
We, we have somebody on capital planning.
Right, but the charter and capital planning requires.
This group isn't even gonna have a charter?
It has to be in their charter.
It's like an ad hoc working group.
Right.
We'll figure it out.
But maybe you can't, maybe, maybe you can't, and well, and then he thought someone else from the department and a resident at large, maybe there'll have to be a couple of residents or.
I would think if it's not a committee, if it's.
Right, it's just, it's a working, it's a working group.
Right. I mean, because ultimately, whatever decisions get made, I mean, the committee might offer suggestions, but it's going to be the town that's going to. Because presumably, like, the board's selectmen or the finance committee can create.
Right.
Subcommittee, or, you know, whatever.
Right.
Working groups to work on projects if they want to, so.
Right, so we need to figure out if you can be on that, because it is such an informal group, maybe you can be, but if you can't, then, but he had suggested, actually, you, Sean.
And I think the, and the idea is to maybe that committee just in September, October, just kind of get together and then really don't meet in earnest until probably January, because by then, we'll have the six months of, of data with, with the additional services and coverage, and that, that's the idea, to see if it's playing out the way we hope.
And the way the budget is playing out now, as opposed to the past, I mean, it's not, we have a lot of big ticket items out there, we're not, we're not sort of like, this year, we weren't sort of scrambling around to figure out $5,000, you know what I mean? It was like a lot of money. And we had a lot of free cash to deal with it, but, you know, that's not likely to continue to keep happening, and if, in, just since I've been looking at the state aid over the last, you know, I may look this year particularly, but over the last eight years or 10 years or wherever you want to look, I mean, it's tied to school enrollment. You, you can, there's, unless they rewrite the Chapter 70 formula, which I have not heard is going to happen, you know, there's been no major increases in general state aid, it pretty much is very consistent, and, and the Chapter 70 aid tracks school enrollment, like, really closely, so, I mean, once you go to school enrollment, you're pretty much now.
There's some potential for some large rural school aid, I read something today, but also included in that is incentivizing regionalization, which.
We've been down that road.
Yeah, we've been down that road.
It's a good, yeah.
So that's just some, something.
Pat Darden was the superintendent.
I came across.
That was the big push, yeah.
So.
Not by him, but.
No, no, I know, I was, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, so there, we have a little, little course of action on the, on the override side and, and on the ambulance and EMS side, so.
And I know you want to kind of wait till you see the numbers, but maybe we can, I, I hesitate to wait too far into January, that planning process for that group should start this fall, in my opinion.
Oh, I, I agree, it should start, it's just, I, I think until, the schools in particular, because they don't open until September, I mean, so.
I was talking about ambulance.
I'm talking about.
Fire.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant, I thought you were talking about the override.
Start tracking data from the, you know, the ambulance calls.
Yeah, and I think that it's, it's tracked all the time, we, we just have to get it, and, and Bob will, you know, get us stuff.
And, 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 and we know, you know, town's a major employer, many of us that employ people, it's very difficult to find people and. Have we been able to hire people to cover shifts on the ambulance?
There's a lot of, there, there, it's all per diem, so we've hired all these people, not as like full-fledged.
Yeah, right, but they're enough, enough for people to cover.
I think, I mean, I think there's been, I, I don't want to, I don't want to speak to this, but I'm, I, I think there's been some times where they didn't have coverage, but I don't think that it happened to create any kind of problem with response.
Yeah, no, I'm just more thinking like, if they haven't been able to get anybody and the shifts aren't being covered, then the whole thing might be moot anyway.
Right.
We might not have to worry about it if we can't hire anybody.
I think he's doing, I think he's getting covered.
What was the timeframe, he said earlier, he, he made a comment and it was a certain timeframe, and I don't remember if it was a quarterly or six months, but it was ambulance calls last year had, at a certain point, had like 60 handoffs, and this year, only 11.
Right.
So, so that the additional coverage is, but the number of calls was about the same, so.
That's what I was gonna ask, did he say?
Yeah, yeah, so I think he said they've had 60, and 50 they've been able to handle themselves.
So presumably, they're bringing in more revenue as well.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Yep.